Good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Southwick Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. As you can all tell, we are meeting here virtually via Zoom. We will not be meeting at the Southwick Town Hall this evening due to the inclement weather and the closure of Town Hall. The first thing we'll do is a roll call of everybody here. First, there is myself, Jessica Thornton, Planning Board Chair. We also have Vice Chair David Spina.
Hey, everybody.
Member Diane Josba.
Hi.
Member Jason Grunwald.
Present.
Member Marcus Phelps.
Bill.
Our Associate Member Giovanni Alsop.
Hi.
We also have our Town Planner Alvin Allen.
Present.
Planning Executive Terry Rene Houdin.
Hello.
Hello. All right, we are recording this meeting. If you are, that is fine. You just need to let us know in the messages. At the bottom, first thing on the agenda is the Town Planner's Report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. For the Town Planner's Report, I just have a couple of items. One being, I guess I'll just start off with the, just wanted to alert everyone that we will have a, an upcoming meeting with PVPC, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, again, for the update of our zoning bylaws. We will have our working group session, which will occur December 10th, so I just want to keep that on everyone's radar. And then following that meeting, we will look to have our first public meeting sometime in January to be decided. The second matter is 801 College Highway. I've had, Mr. Patel has called me a couple of times between last week and this week, just seeking to see if he could actually put a residence on his commercial lot. Currently, the lot has a convenience store and gas station. And he is seeking to put residents, I guess, for his, his, his workers to utilize. And I know we want to promote, you know, mixed use on College Highway. However, I just have apprehensions to putting a residence on a, a lot, you know, where you're going to have folks having to traverse through gas station traffic. So I just have my apprehensions to that, but, you know, I just wanted to put it out there to the board and, you know, for you guys to think about and, you know, if you have comments one way or the other, just feel free to reach out to me. So that's, that's all I have for Town Player Business.
All right. Let's see. Next thing on the agenda is public comments. If there's anybody here online that has a public comment for something that is not already listed on the agenda, you can either raise your hand or unmute yourself and speak up.
Yes, this is Guy Stanhope. I live across from 6 South Loomis.
Can you give us your address, Mr. Stanhope?
5 South Loomis.
Bye, thank you. Go ahead.
And I just was wanting to look at some plans. I was supposed to get sent some plans by somebody just to make sure that the water flow is going to be enough to handle those lots. Because the water comes to my side eventually. I'm on the downhill side, so I just wanted to, you know, I know there's retention ponds. And I know all that, but I wanted to make sure that the size of the piping is going to be correct to handle the water flow.
My apologies, Mr. Stanhope. I meant to send those, send those plans to you earlier. I'll try to get those plans to you tomorrow. And again, the matter will come up at the next meeting on December 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Stanhope. Was there any other public comments? Hearing none. The next thing on our agenda is the continued public hearing for 6 South Loomis Street for a request to modify an estate law in common driveway special permit and site plan approval. We have an email that was received from Arlevest Associates requesting a continuance of this matter to the next meeting. Do I hear a motion to continue to 7:05 PM on December 16th?
Dave Spina, so moved.
Do I hear a second? We'll do a roll call vote. Jessica Thornton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Diane Josba, aye.
Jason Grunwald, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Seeing as the next public hearing cannot begin until 7:10 PM, we are going to move to another item on the agenda. The next thing we have is our Planning Board Review and Revaluation of Subdivision Infrastructure Security for Noble Steed Crossing Subdivision. Looks like Mr. Saltmarsh is online with us. You with us, Jesse?
He'll, he'll have to unmute. I see he's still mute. There he is.
Can you, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, Jesse. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not very savvy with this, but can you still hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so since the last meeting, we've, we've paved the entranceway. And I've installed no outlet signs, three of them. Just like temporarily, so people that don't live there are aware that it doesn't go all the way around. And we'll be installing some additional construction fence at each end of where the crossing is to, you know, as, as more of a visual barrier type thing as well. And, you know, with this weather, we're a little bit held up, but we plan to continue construction as weather permits. With whatever's left on our, our to-do list out there.
Do we have maybe for the next meeting, an updated punch list of things that are left to be completed and things that can be touched over the next few months as weather is likely to be inclement and it'll be too cold to pave most of the time. So just so that we have an idea of what we're looking out for and what the goals are coming up.
Yep, I can update our to-do list and I'll bring that to the next meeting and, you know, update you guys and go over everything.
Great. You were able to meet with Alvin and John?
Yes, I met with Alvin and John last Wednesday and updated them with everything, with everything that with everything that I said. Sorry about that. I'm in a truck.
Plow season, right?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Was there anything you needed to add, Mr. Allen?
Nope, nothing to add. Again, we'll meet next Wednesday with John and I. And again, we'll look forward to any sort of timetable that he puts forth.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for taking a break from pushing the snow and updating us and we'll see you in a couple of weeks, Jesse.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you as well.
Yep, bye.
All right. Still not quite 7:10, but we will take note of the next discussion item, which was going to be a parking report from 141 Congamone Road from Mr. Ken Eggleston. Board members who are a little bit more experienced are familiar with Mr. Eggleston. And so for those of you who aren't, Mr. Allen sent out some information, including the special permit decision and site plan. So that you have an idea really of what we'll be looking at when he comes before us in a couple of weeks to address that discussion item.
Jess, I looked at that material a little bit and it indicated he was going to come, I guess, back for two years for, you know, reporting.
Yep, it was for two full years of full site usage. So it was extended out a year last year because we, there haven't been up until this point at least, two active, successful, up and running restaurant businesses on site in addition to the Marina, so that when we were doing this look back at the parking situation that we would be looking at information that the site was being used at full capacity currently. That hadn't been the case for that site. They had, yeah, so I look forward to hearing from Mr. Eggleston next week on what businesses are currently there and what they experienced this past season and we can discuss then what we will do going forward with the look back, if any. Okay. Next, we have the continued public hearing for 157 Feeding Hills Road. This is a request to modify the special permit, wellhead protection district special permit, non-conforming use special permit, flood hazard and wetlands district special permit and site plan approval. This is also known as Creep's Tea House and Board Member Diane Josba, as in a butter, has abstained from this hearing. We have received an email from the representative from Salvini Associates requesting a continuance in this public hearing to our next meeting. With that, do I hear a motion to continue to 7:10 PM on December 16th, 2025?
Dave Spina, so moved. Jason Grunwald.
Jason Grunwald, second?
Yep.
Yes, okay. Do roll call vote. Jessica Thornton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Jason Grunwald, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Giovanni, Giovanni Alsop, aye.
You. Next on our agenda is the discussion item for battery energy storage systems or BES moratorium. Let's just say that the Select Board did not choose to act to vote to request that we open a special, excuse me, a public hearing on this proposal as it was the belief of the majority of that board that the proper order of operations here would be for the Planning Board to formally vote to request the permission from the Select Board and give our explanation why we were looking to do so in order to open up a public hearing on the matter, discuss it, vote to or not to propose a moratorium for it then to go on either the special town meeting or annual town meeting warrant. We as a board did not have that discussion in that way last meeting because this was not originally a Planning Board initiated request. The Select Board Chair and CAO reached out to us to see if the Planning Board would be interested in this. And because of the tight turntable with the special town meeting, we said, yeah, we would, but you know, we haven't gone through the motions of researching this and coming up with our own idea for exactly why we were asking for it. How long exactly we'd be looking to have it. And, you know, public hearings, bylaw changes happen for a lot of just the different reasons. This past year, it was requested that we do it because of a citizen's petition. Sometimes it's in response to a lawsuit and we have to do a bylaw change or update or circumstances change, or somebody comes in with a public comment and says they are having an issue and would like the board to look at fixing it. So it happens for a lot of different reasons and this one kind of came about in a different fashion and we acted in the quickest manner possible so that we could address it. At this point in time, I do not know that this board will have the posting ability. Or if we couldn't piggyback on what has already been posted for a public hearing to begin at our next meeting. The Select Board, if they are in receipt of something from us next Monday, could authorize us to open that public hearing the next day, I believe. Think there's a timetable there, but it seems like the Select Board members are looking for our rationale and our reasoning and do we have a full-throated reason, rationale, interest, self-motivating Planning Board desire to not only hold a public hearing on the matter, but to take input from members of the public, business owners, all the like, before proposing this moratorium, asking for it to be a town meeting and then standing up and asking the townspeople to vote alongside with us in our request. I am going to let you all have your moment to think about it and share with me now whether or not you are interested in any manner of taking a vote this evening or in the near future to open a public hearing on a potential battery energy storage system moratorium and what exactly that means.
I tried to digest this.
Okay, Mr. Spina.
Yeah, no, I, I think it, obviously, you know, it's an evolving technology. I want to be careful to not put the words into the mouth of either DPW or the Fire Department, but the last time we were talking, I think about the, it was the Goose Pond, the solar array over there. My impression was that the Fire Department is still kind of figuring out how the batteries work and what the technology is and what safety implications there may be. And certainly, me personally, I rely almost 100% on those experts when it comes time to, you know, making the right decisions or my recommendations or conditions on a special permit for a battery solar field. So I think at the very least, I, I don't see any harm. I think it's prudent to, you know, have a hearing where we can get, you know, information from them and the public in general about, you know, how they feel about, you know, do they feel confident that they understand the technology sufficiently to be able to advise us fully, or is there still some work to be done and maybe things that want to be baked into a bylaw that are, you know, you know, very specific that we provide guidance to those who want to put such a facility in. So I'd be in favor of voting to, I guess, request the Select Board to request us to have a hearing.
To allow us.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Josba?
And that makes sense to me as well, just to get more information and hear from all sides, I guess, makes perfect sense to me. And like I said, I just want, I want more time to digest everything. I want to hear from everybody. So I, it makes sense to me to vote in favor of a public hearing.
Mr. Grunwald?
I'm online. I would, I would like a public hearing. I, I'll echo Dave's sentiments on the fire. I think there's some concerns with how we're putting it out and when it starts and how far it's going to spread and what we need. I think there's some other underlying things of if it leaches, if it goes into groundwater, those chemicals that are associated with those materials, how far we should or should not be away from water sources, ponds, different things like that. I, I think some due diligence, some information from the town and then updating bylaws with some of these information after we get it is prudent and value add for both us and the town.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes, a couple of things. I did listen to the Select Board meeting on this topic and I'm thinking we need to send some kind of a draft article which could be as straightforward as a moratorium on the expansion of existing or the development of new battery energy storage systems, BES, until June 30th, 2027. I use that date only because Mr. Mogland thought that whatever article was presented should be to a date certain. So, you know, we could be flexible on that date. June 30th would, you know, be after the annual town meeting. Whatever, if, if it went on. And then along with that draft article, there should be an explanation, which would be moratorium will provide time to research the subject technology and environmental and infrastructure impacts, I guess you'd say, in order to develop a bylaw, bylaws, bylaw or bylaws. In other words, we could modify our existing solar bylaw to say that any system can't have a BES larger than a certain size. And the other thing is we may need a new bylaw because people do build these BES as standalone to capture other types of generated energy. Now, I don't know if that would ever happen at Southwick, but anyway, that's kind of my take on it. But I think the Select Board is going to want something substantive to look at. And then, of course, the challenge is the timeframe. If they don't approve it till their next meeting, is there enough time to have a notice and have a hearing to catch or be able to get it on the January special town meeting? And I don't know if we're prepared to present something that, like that to town meeting. I mean, it's, it's challenging sometimes to put something out there to town meeting. And depending on which the way, way the wind starts to blow, it can pass or it can get hammered. So those are my thoughts, Madam Chair.
Mr. Phelps, I just wanted to clarify that our zoning bylaws do not mention BES or battery energy storage systems. So if we draft something, would likely refer to pertinent structures.
Okay. Could we say IE? Battery energy storage system? I don't know. You mean, in, I mean, we have approved, I guess, two systems that are linked to solar arrays, one on Hudson Drive and then the one we did down at Goose Pond, so.
Yes, I guess I'll check with our, our legal team in regards to that. How we refer to them.
Giovanni, did you have any thoughts?
No, I'm okay.
I appreciate and take all of your feedback and your words, and I think they're all wise and prudent. I am very appreciative of Mr. Phelps's work to put together a very nice draft, quick and easy article and proposal and explanation for the Select Board. I think all of those things that you said and maybe an additional line in regards to the fact that currently where these would be situated within our bylaws is they're allowed in pretty much any district, but most importantly in the industrial zones. And those are in fact over our watershed and our protected water areas. So I think I agree with what was said. I think we should take a vote to refer the matter to the Select Board with a, you know, and of course, it's all subject to change. What we send to the Select Board when we have our public hearing and have our discussion, we may end up with a different article to actually present either to special town meeting or to the annual town meeting. We can open up a public hearing next week and we can have a ton of input and we may get overwhelmed with it and just not be able to turn it around in time for it to be posted and approved and ready to go at the special town meeting. It just might not happen, but we can start the process. And with an eye towards the annual town meeting. I agree with the date mentioned, the June 30th, 2027. As any updated bylaw that we would do would need to be incorporated with our entire Chapter 185 update, which isn't going to happen before this year's annual town meeting in May. So we would need until a moratorium, until that later date to accomplish what we would be looking to do. And I want to clarify that I believe that the board is asking to hold this public hearing not as a method of stopping solar in the town of Southwick. That is not the goal. The goal is to make sure that we actually have better battery energy storage systems listed and identified and defined within our bylaws. As well as make sure that all the new information and guidelines that are coming down from the state can be incorporated into the bylaws and that we give our fire and safety officials the proper time to have their input and develop the guidance that we will then follow down the road when they advise us on these applications. Does that sound good with everybody?
I had two other comments.
Yes, sir.
One, at the Select Board meeting, was mentioned by Diane Gale, there, there are pieces of legislation at the state level that are moving along. So that in some ways affects my second comment, which would be we may give the impression that we're rushing something if we try to get it on the special town meeting. In some ways, might be, I don't know, you would say smoother or look more professional if we, you know, take the time, have the hearing, do the research and then vote on an article that we can back up at a town meeting.
I agree, and I think part of the the checks and balances on that is that when we do close our public hearing and send a proposal over to the Select Board, they have to vote to include it on the warrant. They have to authorize its inclusion, I believe. So if it looks like we've slap dashed something together in a, in a way, I'm sure the Select Board members would not vote to include it. Am I noticing that our Select Board Chairperson Diane Gale is online? Did you have anything that you wanted to add? Chairwoman Gale? Or if we have misspoken the timeline?
Hello there, Diane Gale. I appreciate your discussion on this and I think we've taken a very reasonable approach to it. Your explanation is spot on as to what the motivation is for it. It just might have been the opportune time if it can be pulled together because there is an upcoming special town meeting that this might be able to be included. If not, then it would just be deferred to the regular annual town meeting, of course. And yes, we would approve the, we would have to approve it to go on to the warrant. Um and yes, we would approve the, we would have to approve it to go on to the warrant. Um at, you know, however you present it. And of course, it would go through legal counsel to review that as well and make sure that it was all um worded. Adequately and everything, so, but I I think your, your discussions have been exactly what the motivation is.
Do you um agree that the, if you heard it, the language as proposed by Mr. Phelps uh would be sufficient? Of an explanation and request to your fellow select board members for a vote at next Monday's meeting?
Um I think that was. General enough to initiate the public hearings and then the public hearings, of course, are going to prescribe. What is presented for the actual article. And and it may be that the public says they want to leave it wide open. So, yeah, I think, I think that's what is uh look, what is being looked for.
Um and it is my understanding that due to the timing of the select board's non-vote last night. We actually have still advertised. Uh for the public hearing to begin on December sixteenth. Is that accurate, Mr. Allen?
That is correct.
Okay, and um whether we pulled it for the next week or not, we could add it if necessary at that point, right? So it's the two consecutive weeks of posting?
Yes, I haven't pulled it as of yet, so I just wanted to wait for this meeting this evening to see how you guys weigh one way or the other.
All right, then I will not ask him to repeat it, but I'll ask him to email it over to Mr. Allen. Um so that he can share it directly with the select board, but do I hear a motion? To send a letter requesting the opening of a public hearing on a moratorium. For battery energy storage systems. As explained in Mr. Phelps's letter. I I lost a little, I lost the thread there a little bit.
Again, I I just want to be careful with wording as well. Again, we don't uh mention battery storage. Uh I'm sorry, battery energy storage systems in our bylaws, so this would be again a temporary um. Moratorium on small and large uh ground mounted uh photovoltaic um systems.
Do we want, can we modify it to just large?
That's fine, that's fine.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma- Madam Chair.
I don't believe that will cover it without also stating the battery energy. I think it had to be both. Because they can be cohabitating or standalone.
Okay, so. I mean, even if it's not already defined in our bylaw, the discussion of. A moratorium on.
I can say a pertinent structures, I E BES.
Okay. Does that modified motion sound good, Mr. Spina?
I'll re- I renew my motion.
I'll second it.
Do a roll call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Dave Spina, I.
Diane Josba, I.
Jason Grunwald, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Very good.
So I'll, I'll send uh whatever text I dreamed up here to Alvin. And he can massage it and then pass it by. Jessica.
Yeah, that'd be great and we'll send that straight over to Ms. Gale and Ms. Parker. Over in the C A O's office so that they are sure to include it and have it available at the next select board meeting so that. We can continue in opening up that public hearing on the sixteenth. All right. Now, the next thing on the agenda is the decision for success ministry, which. Not happening, we haven't closed it. Um were there any late submittal A and Rs?
There were not.
I, next thing on the agenda is the meeting minutes for November eighteenth, two thousand twenty five. I updated them a little bit right before the meeting. There weren't any major changes to what was there. Everybody have a chance to look at the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November eighteenth, two thousand twenty five?
Dave's been a so moved.
I had just a second.
Roll call vote, Jessica Thor and I.
Dave's been a I.
Diane Josba, I.
Jason Grunwald, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Giovanni, wanna give an I?
I, Giovanni Elsab, I.
Wonderful, thank you. Um are there any planning board or staff member comments?
The master plan implementation committee is meeting tomorrow. Um we're gonna be going over the draft of the presentation for the meeting with the select board and planning board on December, get this right, eighth, right? And we also doing some benchmarking on other, you know, nearby communities, their master plan implementation committees and see if we can't learn. Something from them about, you know, how they're doing as far as, uh you know, motivating their committees and other boards and coordinating that and. See if we can't uh maybe, you know, you know, get some lessons from them and 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 help us keep everybody moving forward.
And and uh Dave, I owe you some paperwork. Uh I, my apologies, I meant to get it to you last week. I just.
Okay.
Uh with a moratorium language and such, but um I'll try to get that to you uh tomorrow morning.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other planning board or staff comments? Hearing none? Then do I hear a motion to close the meeting?
Dave's been a so moved.
All those in favor, say aye. All right, thank you all so.